Well, good morning and thank you all for being here. We've -- we spent the last eighteen days working very, very hard to come to some sort of resolution for the unfinished work of the first regular session of the 63rd legislature. And obviously, the most important of that unfinished work, although I could probably add to a few other things, was the failure of Senate Bill 1067. Senate Bill 1067, as most of you are very much aware, puts us in compliance and in, if you will, in a partnership with the other states of the United States for child support. And coming to this resolution has not been easy. In fact, the Speaker of the House, Scott Bedekey, and I were talking the other day, and Scott apologizes for not being here, as does Brent, as the President pro tem. But we were talking the other day, and I think it was sixteen days after the session had ended, and we both were looking at our phone records. We had talked at least once every day, including Sundays. Many times, twice. And a few times, three times, because at one point on a Sunday, he inadvertently dialed me. Some people call that a derriere dial, but anyway, it has been a process that we've worked very hard on. We've included an awful lot of people in it. And I want to begin really by thanking Scott, by thanking the Speaker and his staff. I want to thank my staff, especially Tammy Perkins, for the efforts that she's put in. Obviously, also Dick Armstrong and the Department of Health and Welfare staff that has worked daily in order to clear up any misgivings that were initially confronting Senate Bill 1067 and dismissing some of the ideas that were continuing to circulate that caused people to have pause. And pause that did not enable that legislation to move forward. But as we all know, it is very important to the state of Idaho and our continued effort on personal responsibility. And that's really what it comes down to. We're either going to have folks that have children not be able to escape that personal responsibility by moving either to another state or to another country. And I would add that we have ninety-seven cases right now in foreign countries. Sixty of those are in Canada. Then we've got a few in England, Sweden, and Germany.
Australia.
And Australia. So being able to reach across those otherwise considered barriers, we can hold people accountable and make them personally responsible for the children. I'm going to now issue a proclamation on the call of the extraordinary, extraordinary special session of the 63rd legislature. Proclamation from the Office of Governor. Whereas Article 4, Section 9 of the Constitution of the State of Idaho empowers the governor on extraordinary occasions to convene the legislature by proclamation. And whereas there is a concern about the effects of a tabling previous legislation that was intended to bring our state into compliance with the National Child Support Program, which was created through a federal-state partnership. Whereas there is a compelling public interest in maintaining Idaho's established child support program, which provides services to more than 400,000 parents and children with child support cases. Whereas there is a need for Idaho to operate in full compliance with the reciprocal interstate process as provided by the Uniform Interstate Family Support Act. Whereas an extraordinary session occasionally, an extraordinary, extraordinary occasion concerning child support services requiring emergency attention has arisen in the state of Idaho, which makes it appropriate and desirable to convene the 63rd Idaho Legislature in an extraordinary session. Now therefore, I C.L. Butch Otter, Governor of the State of Idaho, and by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of this state, do by this proclamation, convene the 63rd Idaho Legislature in extraordinary session in the legislative chambers at the Capitol in Boise City and Ada County, Idaho, at the hour of 8:00 a.m. on the eighteenth day of May, 2015, for the following enumerated and no other purposes: to consider the passage and enactment of legislation amending and adding to the Idaho Code relating to the Uniform Interstate Family Support Act and other laws; in order to maintain a compliant state program of child support services in Idaho, in Idaho uniform with all other states, in the establishment and enforcement of interstate and international support orders to ensure our state's policies for recognizing foreign judgments that are preserved. The extraordinary, extraordinary session of the legislature convened by this proclamation shall have no power to legislate on any subject other than those specified herein. I hereby direct and require that a copy of this proclamation be delivered to the Lieutenant Governor, to each member of the 63rd Idaho Legislature, to the Constitutional Officers of Idaho, at the earliest practical time. In witness whereof, I will hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of the State of Idaho in the Capitol of Boise on this twenty-ninth day of April in the year of our Lord 2015 of Independence of the United States of America 239th and of Statehood of Idaho 125th. Signed, C.L. Butch Otter, and attested thereto by Secretary of State Lawrence Denny. Okay, and with that, we'll open the floor to questions. Yes, Melissa?
Are you confident that you're going to pass the legislation in the House?
Well, I would say that, yes. I am confident. We still have, we were in hopes that we could pass out a draft today, but we still have some fine tuning to do on that. But the more eyes that we get on this and make this available, and we'll make this available as soon as possible, not only to the legislatures, it'll go up on my website and Dick's website, so that the legislatures themselves can take a look at the bill and digest it. And if they need to ask questions, we'll be ready to answer those questions. But I feel, I feel certain that all the meetings that we've had and all the get-togethers that we've had and all the different, the different times that we've, we have written and rewritten that legislation, that I think we've touched all bases. So I feel, I feel confident. But I've always cautioned folks that you never know what's going to, you never know what's going to happen.
Has the Speaker communicated to you specifically which committee members or how many committee members will change their vote?
I'm not prepared to answer that, Bill. We have talked very often to many of those folks, and they have been part of this vetting process. They have been part of the effort with Dick Armstrong and the Department of Health and Welfare and other folks to make sure that we have answered all questions, especially for those that had questions about it. We have, we have had engaged, I don't know how many, phone conversations with the, with the Health and Human Services and the child support folks in Washington, D.C., vetting every time the language that we are going to be proposing in the RS.
And comfortable with that language, that some minor amendments to the language are acceptable, as I said?
Well, you know, if you've got, if you've got ten or fifteen folks out of a hundred and five that have, are aware, now everybody's going to be aware that we are going to have a special session. But we were reticent, I was reticent to call a special session until we had gone through that process and answered those questions and satisfied some of the inquiries that folks had.
Is the bill really different from the rejected bill, Senate Bill 1067? And if so, can we vote?
Well, I'm not prepared to answer that question until we finalize the RS. And as soon as we finalize the RS, you can take 1067 and lay it down next to whatever RS number is going to be, whatever our draft number is going to be, and you can decide that for yourself. There will be some changes, but I'm not prepared to enumerate what those changes are or explain them. Yes? Who had a question over here?
Same question.
Pardon me?
I had the same question, sir.
You had the same question? You want me to answer it again?
It's a process, so it's a new RS, a new bill. Committees in both houses will have to hear it, move it to their asses, so it's basically starting from scratch on a long bill.
Precisely. And I can't say for absolute certainty which chamber is going to start in.
Can you say which committee it may be?
That's up to the Speaker's call. I'm in the executive branch of government, he makes that call.
Governor, now that you've called a special session, what is your thoughts regarding the night of signing a die where Democrats tried to bring out debate on this bill because they felt it wasn't important enough and couldn't create something that will happen to start a session?
Well, that's a good try, but I'm not going to go there. I'm looking forward. We've got some work to do. If we had some problems in the past, I want to get those behind us. And I'm not going to sit around and waste a lot of time and energy on discussing what we didn't do, because we're going to focus on what we have to do.
Did you learn any lessons from the first round, or how to get this through now?
You know, I have to tell you, I haven't gone through that process yet. But certainly, I will learn some lessons from that. I don't know what lessons. You know, there was no way I could stop them from signing a die, and if they wanted to sign a die, they could. I had indicated to them, I think earlier on, that, that they would probably have to, if we failed in that last effort, that we would, we would have to come back into session. But I couldn't say that for absolute certainty.
Do you think about the total cost of the special session?
Well, the estimates right now, between thirty-five and forty, was it forty-five thousand dollars?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. But when we reviewed it and we asked the numbers folks to review it, I don't think that include pay. I think that only included travel and assembly.
Is it likely to pay then, or is that still up in the air?
Well, I'm not going to get into punishment now until they pass the bill. No, I'm kidding. No, I, you know, I haven't talked to the Speaker about that.
How long do you think the special session lasts?
How, how long do I think it should? Well, the eighteen days we've worked on it, why, I think it ought to be hours, not days. I'm hopeful that it will be hours, not days. Any other question?
Yes, Governor, the final bill that you took action on from this year's regular legislature.
Wait a minute. Any other question on this?
Can you talk briefly, just if it's been since 2006?
Sorry, Betsy.
Since we've had a special session. Why is this session important? Can you just kind of talk about the scope of this and how necessary it was to make this happen?
Well, you know, the focus by you folks in the media has been on the forty-six thousand dollars, which is the sixteen thousand dollars that we, or sixteen million dollars, I'm sorry. The sixteen million dollars that we actually spend in sharing the information and being able to access those federal records of where people have moved in the state of Idaho, or in the United States. The forty million dollars is part, pardon me, another thirty million dollars is part of the tenant funds for child support. But in the overall scheme of things, Dick, the Health and Welfare Department under their child support collects over two-hundred million dollars a year in child support. It comes into the agency and then goes back out to the dependent children for their support. If we weren't to have either the, the access to the federal system, if we weren't to have, were not to have the, the other child support for a temporary need that families have, we would only be able to access, we would only be able to provide for those who voluntarily pay in. And that's what, twenty million?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yes.
About twenty million that people actually pay in to the department so that that money, pay in under an order, so that that money could then be sent out to the dependent recipients. So, you know, you're talking, and I think at one time, I asked the question, how much are we behind in child support in Idaho? And I think your answer was six hundred million.
That's correct.
So, you know, if you, if you started adding two-hundred million dollars a year to the six hundred million, wouldn't take you too many years to get to a billion, over a billion dollars. Because, once again, for those that are going to pay in voluntarily, that recognize their personal responsibility and recognize the importance of that court order.
Governor, what was your approach in making the decision to call the special session? Did you approach it lightly?
Oh, no. I have to tell you that it was an arduous process. Fortunately, I had great help with Speaker Bedekey, with Dick Armstrong and his agency, and the folks that run the child support system for the state of Idaho. We, I can't, I can't tell you how many meetings, how many phone calls, how many conference calls, and how many folks that we reached out to in the legislature and out of the legislature in order to come to some sort of comfortable conclusion. And let me call it that. That should I call it, I wasn't going to call a special session if we weren't going to get anything done. And so I am cautiously comfortable that we will be successful. And that's where we needed to get to, and that's why it took that long to get there.
Governor, you pretty much said there's no guarantee that this will pass. Is there a backup plan if this doesn't pass the bill or is this a special session?
There is no alternative. We've discussed executive orders. We've discussed every other opportunity or every other possibility. A special session and a successful special session is the only way that we can hold people personally responsible. That's the only way.
What are the consequences of failure of that?
Well, I think I just went through that. First, you start with not having access to where these folks are so that we can get an order to find them, no matter what state or, or country that's a signatory to that agreement. So there's, there's sixteen million, another thirty million in the temporary assistance for needy families. And then, of course, how many people will voluntarily pay in? You know, it's the, it's the, it's the deadbeat parent that we're after here, and it's our responsibility to make them responsible, to hold them, pardon me, responsible.
Would you, are you understanding that the entire treaty would fall apart? Have you heard that?
Yeah, well, you know, that very well could be, that if not every state, I have heard that as well, but I have not verified that. I think that would probably be a possibility. But it would certainly put us in, in the, in the shadows. We would be, we would not be able to access people if they moved into any other state. We would not be able to access their, their information and their address, nor to serve a court order on that person, which would obviously be honored by the courts in the other states.
Governor, I know this would be a typically shared, but are you, if you're hoping for a special session, that given the hours and the debates, are you going to be encouraging public testably to the committees?
Once again, I think that's going to be up to the call of the committees that are going to treat the initial introduction of this legislation, the final writing of the legislation. I think it's going to be up to them, and my reach doesn't go in, go up to the third floor.
On this one?
On this one?
Yes.
All right, well, what is it then?
Governor, what message do you have for those nine House members who voted to table this bill on the final day of this year's legislative session?
Betsy, I'm not going to go there. Once again, we need to move forward. We, you know, I, I have always said in politics, even as you might recall when I was in Congress, because it always got a, a laugh. But people that pursue these issues are sincere. And they, they feel that they know what they know, and they're going to act on that knowledge. And I can never, I can never criticize a person for what their belief is. But what we've tried to stress on everybody is that each of those representatives, each of those senators, represent forty-seven thousand people. And we can actually, Dick can, by zip code, we can tell them how many of these dependent folks, how many of these kids are in their district. We can tell them right down to the number. By the way, I want to thank Director Armstrong once again, and I should have done this earlier. I asked him to withhold the letter that he was going to have to send out to a hundred and fifty-five thousand families. After just a few days, I saw that there was a real possibility of success. It wasn't bright yet, but we had a real possibility of success. And so I know, I know Director Armstrong and his care for those folks and not to create anxiety, which that letter would have undoubtedly done. But, and he felt that he had a moral obligation and an administrative obligation to inform them of what the possibility was going to be in initially sixty days. And then it got a little shorter than that, so, once again, Director, thank you for withholding that and not creating that kind of anxiety out there. Yes?
Do you ask to make the RS to be finalized before you go on the trade mission, I believe, early night, or?
Oh, yes. I, you know, I apologize, there was a few things that came up at a later moment, and I had actually anticipated being able to hand that out in this meeting. But we got a few questions from some folks, and we might as well answer those questions now, rather than go ahead and, and pass it out and then have those questions come up later. Because then that could change things, and that could change some of the agreements and some of the understandings that we have come to since the eleventh day of, of April.
Do you expect this will pretty much fly through the legislature or the debate on this?
When pigs fly, anything, no. Listen, I expect there to be the legitimate compassion. I expect there, there to be the sincere debate and sincere, on both sides. You know, by no means am I, I don't want to suggest to anybody that we've got a hundred and five folks ready to sign on the bottom line. Because there are a lot of folks that know that this process has been going on, but if, if they weren't an immediate part of those conversations that were going on, you know, some folks took a vacation afterwards, other folks were doing other things, and they weren't available to be part of that process. So I, I don't expect it to fly, Bill, through the legislature. I would be, I would be, I would be grateful, but each of these legislators are going to have to go back to their constituents and explain what they did and why they did what they did. And they're probably going to want to make sure that the other legislators know why they're going to vote yes or no.
What is your message to the families that are reliant that we're bound to work?
Listen, my message to them is, you know, pray for success. I, we can use all the help that we can get. I don't want pressure, but we can use all the help that we can get from all of those families. And I would tell you, it's not just the four-hundred thousand, the hundred and fifty-five thousand households plus the dependents within those households that are, that are being considered at risk here. There's whole communities at risk. There's, there's lots of other focuses, but between the emails and phone calls and letters, not emails, excuse me, through the messages, well, I do have an email address in, for the Office of Governor. I don't have a personal email. But, you know, there are a lot of churches that have mobilized. There are a lot of people who have a legitimate concern for what's going to happen to those, those people that are vulnerable. And so I would ask them all for their help. I don't want them calling up legislators, I don't want them, you know, harassing anybody, but a little time on our knees and a little time in, in a spiritual effort would be great. Okay, Betsy?
All right, Governor, the final bill that you took
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I apologize again. Is there anybody else have anything on this? Okay, Betsy!
The final bill that you took action on from this year's legislative session, you allowed it to come along without your signature. Generally, when you give that, you're sending a message, and in this case, it was the budget for the State Department of Administration to show a significant decrease in state general costs. What was the message you were sending by not signing that bill?
Well, you know, I reluctantly agreed with the legislature to move some things out of administration, the I E N. And it's, I reluctantly agreed to that, and that was the biggest amount of money that was moved out of administration. But the, and I, I, I know that we're, I'm going to be going back after the interim between now and next January 1st and ask the legislature to reconsider where we're going to put that. The task force that we're putting together, which are tech folks, which are folks that, you know, will draw from information from other states on how they've managed and what they've done and who runs their, their education network. And so it was, it was just an effort to say, you know, I didn't really agree with you moving that. I understand, but I didn't agree with you moving that. Let's all admit.
Ladies first.
Thank you. I was just curious, have, has there been any movement on the investigation into the legality of this horse racing that you mentioned you wanted to launch, the veto, the repeal?
No, not that I'm aware of. We haven't received, we, we have received some letters from attorneys on an administrative taking, but that's the only thing that even hints so far. I fully expect there to be one, but that's the only thing that hints at any kind of a lawsuit relative to the horse racing veto. Yes, sir?
Brent, Boise, we knew this morning that your man to the left of you over there has actively crafted legislation to expand Medicaid under the guise of Medicaid being applied. When we hear from you, this last, sorry, my last.
Oh, okay.
I missed a memo.
I know, Governor, it was never the last.
Excuse me, so the question was?
What we hear from you constantly is that you're going to lead it to the legislature, but here over at your cabinet
Right.
is working to expand Medicaid in Idaho. So the question is, is he acting on his own, or is the other administration openly endorsing Medicaid expansion in Idaho?
Once again, if you'll go back to the Supreme Court decision in June of 2010, and we convened a leadership meeting immediately with the legislature. And the question was, the request was, Governor, we don't want you to act on this yourself. We want, what we want you to do is get us the information, get us, if, if you've got an RS that you want to provide to us for us to consider, that's what we want you to do. But we want to be part of the insurance exchange, and we want to be part of Medicaid expansion. And so I'm holding true to that guarantee and that promise. So if we are requested from time to time in, in the agency that some legislator wants to take a look at a piece of legislation and what it would look like, we're honor bound by that pledge in order to provide that kind of information.
What's the current timeline with Teresa Wynn's involvement with the Department of Affairs?
May 8th.
May 8th.
May 8th. Okay. Anything else?
Where are you going, Mr. President?
Pardon me?
Where are you going?
We're flying from here, we're going into Peru. We got sixteen companies that are going with us. I was amazed, I've been to Peru quite a few times when I was in my other life, and we're going going into Lima, and we've got 16 companies going with us, and then we're going to, we're two days there, and then we're two days back in, in Mexico City, and we'll have a couple of other companies meet us there, and then I'll be home on the 16th, just in time. All right, thank you.